At this time, I'd like to ask Jamie to lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag, which is new.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jamie. Approval of the agenda, and before we approve the agenda, there's, I'd like to add an executive after the one we have on here for contractual and a purchase. I also would like to add, and I don't know where we should add it, but I'd like to add a health officer and a zoning administrator report every meeting. Sometimes it's not going to be, you know, we're not going to have anything, but this, this week I do have a couple of things I'd like to bring up.
I would put it with eleven, because we're kind of discussing most positions anyways.
Okay, perfect, eleven A and B, anything? Yeah, okay, perfect, good idea. We'll do eleven A as the health officer and B is the zoning. It will be really quick tonight, just want to bring everyone up to date on some things I've been working on in the last two or three weeks. Public comment, approval of minutes, correspondence, or warrants, sorry, correspondence, excess weight permits, constable questions, proposal of combining specific appointed and stipend positions, discussion continued, with the health officer report and zoning report in there, video recording policy, public comment, execu- executive contractual, and that's for the sheriff's department, executive land purchase, which is also contractual, public comment, and adjourn.
So moved with the changes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. I'd like to open up public comment. Okay, approval of minutes, May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, additions, changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, warrants, accounts payable, June second, two thousand twenty-three, forty-one thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-one cents.
So moved.
Oops, second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Accounts payable, June ninth, two thousand twenty-three, fourteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty-seven cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Payroll, June second, two thousand twenty-three, ten thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-two cents.
So moved, you're in that one.
Uh, I'm in this one, but you know what?
You just approve it next time.
Yeah, we can just approve this next time, so we'll table that one.
Table June second.
Table June second until the next meeting?
Unless Bob pops in.
Right, and then we can come back to it. Good idea, Ange. Payroll, June ninth, ten thousand, fifty dollars, and is that thirty-six or eighty-six?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, that's what I thought, thirty-six cents.
So moved.
Second.
Wanted to be accurate, didn't want to be off by fifty cents.
I have sloppy handwriting, because I'm close to typing.
Any, um, any questions, corrections, huddles in favor?
Aye.
Um, correspondence?
We don't have any tonight.
Perfect. Excess weight permits, I saw one here, um, which is marijuana, is that right?
Yeah.
And it's a fleet permit. Joel has signed off on this. It's your pleasure.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Constable questions?
Um, so it occurred to me that we never really announced publicly what Eddie's roles and responsibilities are in the town, and we've gotten a few phone calls as of late, so I was thinking it'd be good just to announce that Eddie is for now considered mostly a plus-one, um, going with our health officer, animal control officer, zoning administrator, um, to sort of be as a plus-one with them, wear the video cam. He has been out with Leonard once already. Um, he is not available to contact directly through my cellphone. He mainly only goes out at the request of the select board. So my only question is, and Eddie has this question as well, is can he, um, do civil service as far as serve paperwork, for example, for an eviction?
That's part of the statute.
I think that's part of his own statute, right?
That's part of the same statute. We just wanted to make sure, like, because we were very clear, like, you have to get it from the select board itself.
He just tries to.
And if we got something registered at our request, have him serve it all.
Yeah, but that would be at our request. I think, I think to cover this, the situation, because so we don't, they don't have to do this every time one little thing comes up. I think that, that we should just approve him to carry out his duties as the state statue allows for what he's qualified for.
Okay, as long as he's qualified for, absolutely.
I mean, that's, as a civil service or whatever, that, those kinds of things, so that he doesn't have to come to us every time one little thing pops up.
He is familiar with the process, so if he's comfortable providing his phone number for that stuff, then I will, um, start doing that for, in public. Um, but I'll just touch base with him tomorrow and go from there. I know he, um, absolutely wants to help in every way that he can, so I think he'll gladly do that.
Eager to learn.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to limit him to what he can do, you know, statutorily, you know, let's, let's let him go with what he can and what he's, what he's qualified to do.
And then I think it would be, um, helpful if you put the statue on our webpage, so that the residents will know what this, it's in the state statue and what he is allowed to do.
Statue of Duty.
Yeah, that way, you know, they don't think that they can contact him for, I don't know, whatever, that.
Right.
He's not allowed to do, because he doesn't have training.
Yep. Yeah, and I can add a whole, um, constable contact section on our, on our website, because I haven't done that yet.
With his email.
Because we were kind of still establishing all that, and I did get the name tags made. I ordered, uh, lanyards with some plastic holders, so.
Nice.
So it's come on. Get those ceremony.
Okay.
Thank you. That's it for it.
That's it on the constable? Okay. Proposal of combining specific appointed and stipend positions, discussion continued.
So did you get a hold of PL, or BLCT?
Yep, but they said there was no issue in combining the positions, that it's absolutely okay to do that, as long as it's still recommended by the state, um, they're still state-appointed, um, as a health officer.
That was my only concern, basically.
Overlap.
Okay, good.
Um, and then the only other piece was like, the minute taking, there was some questioning on whether that could be combined with it, and like, Hannah was saying, like, she's able to do that pretty well, keep minutes, um, and interact with the boards. But also, I'm not sure that we'll be able to get someone to do that minute-taking piece, and only that minute-taking piece. That's where my concern is with that.
Years ago, we used to have one person that went to zoning and DRB and did both of them, but that was years ago.
We certainly could.
Try.
Right, we certainly could send out.
Do an RFR or.
RFP.
Yep.
Or, uh, you know.
Trying to find somebody.
For that position. Somebody looking for part-time.
I guess we could check with indeed.com or whatever. Kidding.
Yeah, because it's, I mean, it would be super part-time.
Right.
Yeah.
I think it was twelve hours, wasn't it?
I, I don't know, I mean, honestly, I think that the hours would vary, but I don't think we could guarantee any hours.
No, but I think it was up to twelve, like, ten to twelve hours, or five to twelve hours. I remember twelve for some reason.
Yeah, I just don't think we can guarantee any hours, I mean, I know you had a.
I mean, meetings can go forever.
Was.
Pretty long.
No, in the last.
Oh, it was four minutes long.
Yeah, it's four minutes.
Planning, planning can go really long, and then sometimes you might have a public hearing, and then sometimes you might not. You might only have one meeting in a month.
Right.
Um, it really just depends. But we can, um.
We can sort of.
Thinking about it and then bring it back, because I'd love to hear Bob's thoughts. I haven't, I think Bob's, um, maybe out of the country, out of town, out of touch, so.
Yeah, that could be. I.
I haven't heard any feedback, and I would, I would like his feedback on it, too.
Oh, absolutely.
And Brian's.
And I think, I, the, so the zoning, my zoning position is up in August, I think.
We have talk about August.
We have a little time to figure this out.
So it, really don't want to be a waste of time and the money of putting the health officer job out there, so for now, it's kind of.
And uncomfortable doing it right now as it is.
But it would be great if there was somebody out there that would be interested to let us know.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
If they would be interested in that kind of position.
Yep.
Well.
To send a quick email or something to Tara.
Should we do an RFP or put up something out there in July, since it's up in August, so if there's other people that are interested, then.
Yeah, in July.
Give us, give us, uh.
We have another.
Meeting in June, right? We have one more meeting, two more? We have a little bit of time.
Yeah, let's see, I mean, here we have, uh, no, we have one, June twenty-second.
And another one in July.
And then, yeah, the sixth and the twentieth of July, and I think the zoning position's up at the end of August.
Yeah.
So if we put something out, say, um, the fourteenth of July, we, so we have at least one meeting in between there to figure that out.
Yeah.
I just.
No, I think putting the RFP together is good as well. I'll start working on that.
Is that all you have on the stipend positions?
Yeah, other than your.
Yeah, I just want to do a quick, um, I, I think they should be done every, every week anyway, so that people know what's going on in town, you know, every, every board meeting. Um, and like I said, some weeks, some weeks I'm not going to have a report right now, and some weeks I am, this week I do. Um, just want to bring people up to speed. I know there's a lot of questions about different things that are going on. Um, one of the things that I want to talk about, that I've been working on this week, as far as the health officer goes, is the water situation on the Delta Gardens. I know that was in the paper, or I believe it was in the paper, I don't remember if it was, but I know we sent some emails back and forth to Tara and I, and we responded to them, so, um.
Hey, what's, really, what's?
Yeah, I, I have spoken with, um, a couple of residents down the panel states. They, um, they contacted me. I, what's today? Today's Thursday, right? Yeah, I, I think, I think it was Tuesday. I'm pretty sure the first one contacted me on Tuesday. Um, I spoke with her. Um, I spoke with another one on Wednesday. Um, actually, I think the first one was Monday. No, it doesn't matter. Um, spoke with another resident down there. They gave me the phone number for the new person in charge who oversees the park. And I called her, um, the very first day that I got her phone number, which was Tuesday. Um, so the initial call was Monday. I spoke with Jennifer on Tuesday. She's the park. I, I don't know if she's the manager, but she's the one who's overseeing situations like the water at the park. She informed me that, um, the pumps were down, um, they're waiting for parts. Um, the initial call that I got said they had been out of water since Saturday. I've since learned they were out of water since Thursday.
So can I just ask a quick question? When they're out of water like that, do they supply them with drinking water?
So they were supplying them with two cases of water, each, each resident, two cases of water every two days. Um, the residents down there informed me that it took them approximately a half a case of water to flush a toilet. Now, I've never dumped bottled water into a toilet, so I can't confirm or deny that, but I have to believe what they were telling me. So my conversation with, um, the park man, I'm going to call her the park manager for lack of knowledge of what she actually does. On Tuesday, I told her that they were in a kind of a situation down there, let's figure this out. She, this was Tuesday morning. Um, she did open up and give out some more cases of water on Tuesday to the residents. Now, some of this went through an email chain of, from the manager to park residents. One of the problems that they're having down there, um, that I've learned, is some of the residents aren't getting the email, because some of the residents are subletting or they're, or they're renting their residence from, uh, an outside party. It's not direct from Patriot Holdings. Or there, or it's not just the law. Okay, so, so another person owns the trailer, they're renting from that person who is the intern renting from Patriot Holdings. So some of the residents are not being informed about what's going on. I think that's no fault of anybody but the person who owns or people or group or whatever that own that particular trailer and, and are paying the lot rent. I have learned that. I learned a lot in a couple of days, to be perfectly honest with you, about what's going on down there. Um, got another call yesterday morning. The water wasn't fixed, as was sort of promised on Tuesday to me. So another phone call went to the manager, and, um, I gave her a timeline to get back to me. I gave her about a little over half an hour, um, to get back to me on where they were at with the, with the water situation down there at that time. Um, I was on my way to the park. Um, I was, I was on my way down to the park to, uh, to talk with the people or person or whatever that was supposed to be working on the water situation. I passed their truck as I was pulling into the park, so I'm thinking, well, it's either fixed, or is it going for parts, or they can't, or whatever, I, you know, at that point. After I gave Jennifer the sort of a timeline to call me back, I did get a phone call back from her within minutes. I, I will say she was really good about calling me right back, I mean, like, within probably less than ten minutes. She called me, uh, told me that, put me on a conference call with the company who had been in there to fix the pump house and fix the pumps. I was on the, on a conference call with them. They assured me that every pump was up and running, um, but it was going to take a little while, because they had the massive tanks to refill and, and to refill the entire system underground. So, okay, I gotta believe what they're telling me, and what they're telling me was true. Um, they did inform me that it was going to take, could take, um, and they had no way to determine how long to clear up the water because of the sediment and everything, because everything was empty, which is fair. I contacted the residents back that I'd been talking to, and actually, the two of them happened to be together, so it was really easy, it was only one phone call. Um, told them what was going on. They, um, called me back a little later in the afternoon. The water was still pretty cloudy, pretty dirty, pressure wasn't great still, it even, it's not great today, but it even wasn't what they had had previous. Since I called back this morning, talked to the residents, um, their water has cleared up to the point where it was before. The pressure is back to the point where it was before. They are still on a boil order. They're going to be on a boil order. There's no, because of the leaks and whatever else is going on. Um, I ruffled enough feathers, so I got a call from the owner of the park, um, yesterday afternoon. Um, I talked with him at length about the situation and what's going on down there. Um, I, I think, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to put some false hope out there, but I really think that we've gained a little bit of headway with these new owners. Um, and where I, as the health officer at this time, am coming from, those people need water, get it fixed. It's, it's that, to that point. Um.
Is this the same park that got the grant for the water system?
It is. Yep.
Which is coming down the road, but it's going to take.
Well, well, so right now, right now, the holdup is state permits. That's the holdup right now. I, I did talk with the owner. We're going to, we are, I, I have offered as, first off, as the select board chair and as the health officer, I've offered to find a place for them to hold a meeting with, and this is where I want, I need your input, to hold a meeting with the residents of the park. They're very open to coming up here, Jennifer and Tim, um, coming to panel and having this meeting, and we're, I, right now, the tentative, we're tentatively shooting for the first week in July, first weekend.
How many residents are in there?
I don't know the total number of residents, Ange.
I was wondering if it's big enough they could do it here. If it's not big enough, maybe get the school or one of the firehouses.
After, only because that's the holiday.
They're, in, they're, they're planning on being in New England, the, Tim and Jennifer, the first, the first day of July. I think they have some, I think they have some court stuff going on. I, I know they have some court stuff going on, they told me, so they're planning on being here that weekend. That's still, you're right, I tried to push it off to next weekend.
I don't.
So I, I thought about doing it, and I have a couple of other things, I, I, and I want the board's input. I thought about doing it as a special select board meeting, but I also don't, I have reservations about that, because if we do it as a special select board meeting, we take away from the actual problem.
Situation.
Of who has the problem. The residents of that park have the problem, not the town of panel.
That's right.
Okay, so if we do a regular select board meeting, and I'd love to have another representative of the select board with me.
Yep.
But I don't want to have three.
Right.
Or, or somebody else can go instead of me. I'm fine with that, too, but I, I just think if we have two select board members.
To hear.
To hear the people, I, I, I think it's going to go a long way. I think it's going to go a long way with the park owners. But you, and, and if the board decides that we want to do it as a regular board meeting, that's fine, but it opens up the public comment, it opens up just a whole.
No, I think you're on the right track going the other way, with just one or two of us going, well, at least two of us going.
I think two. Yeah, three, we have to do a board meeting, so.
Because that does show that we're, that, you know, that we're paying attention, and, uh, but it is not a town issue.
Right.
It's the town peoples that we care about.
Right.
Exactly.
Oh, exactly.
So that's the fine line that you're trying to walk, and a lot of people don't understand that.
Yeah, I just, you know, I, I think it's time that, I think it's time the residents of the park were heard by the owners of the park.
I don't know, I'm thinking there's quite a few trailers down there.
I'm thinking like fifty, over fifty, right?
Yeah, I, I, I think, and I want to do it in a controlled environment. I don't want to do it out on a lawn somewhere.
No, so I'm thinking like the school.
Well, I think, I think I can do it at the firehouse down there.
The whole fifty?
Yeah, I think I can do it at the firehouse and.
The truck bay.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I can get it through Craig. I haven't even tried yet in my time today. Um, but that way, that way, if some of the residents don't have transportation.
They can walk.
They can get, they can get to the firehouse. That's why I was thinking of the firehouse.
Or even that maybe the Legion downstairs.
Yeah, like, yeah, there you go. I could try the Legion, either, either or. That's, I didn't think of the Legion, Ange, that's a good idea.
Does that mean if it's hot out or whatever, be air-conditioned or whatever?
I just, I just thought if I held it down there in that area locality, if they don't have transportation, they can carpool two or three of them or whatever, very easily, or they could walk up or whatever.
Make it more convenient, yeah.
I'm just trying to make it accessible for everybody who lives down there, one way or another.
Right.
That's, that's what I'm trying to do. And I'm doing that as both, I guess, both the select board chair and the health officer at this time, you know, trying to, okay, we, we do as a board, we do care about what goes on down there, so. That's kind of where I'm at with the health officer stuff.
So in the meeting, would you be there as the chair or the health officer?
I mean, there's a health officer.
So then two chair people could probably go then, right?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. Yeah, you know, I, I'll go, I'm going to go as the health officer.
You're not discussing town business.
Right.
I think we'll be fine.
Yeah.
I just don't want somebody to come back at us and say, oh, yeah, this is a select board meeting, you guys are free to be.
No, if you're sitting there as a chair, that's why I asked that question.
No, I'm, I'm.
Because I think Jamie would like to be there, and I also would like to be there.
And then, and then I think we're fine, because we're not discussing town business.
Right. Right, this is a private entity that we're very interested in the residents.
Support and information, same with the residents.
And I think, and I'm fine with that. I just, just want to be out there and, and transparent about what, what's going on down there, because, because the banner doesn't do us any justice, they, you know, they, they didn't contact me after they were contacted again. They contacted us initially, and they don't even know the end result about what's going on. You know, I do agree that they were out of water too long. Uh, you know, unfortunately, it's, it was, I, I don't buy it was a weekend, I don't buy they're waiting for parts, I don't buy that kind of stuff, but that's what, what was.
So I just have a quick question, since, um, they were out of water, and they knew that they were going to be out of water for a few days. Can we suggest that if that happens again, that they have to have porta potties? I can't see that people are using their drinkable water to flush their toilets.
I totally, I mean, we could probably suggest it.
I mean, I'm just saying the suggestion.
Yeah, sure. I'm, I'm, I'm sure we could just, we could suggest anything.
Water buffalo of some type and.
And for them to get water just for flushing toilets, exactly, because I don't think that they should be using drinkable bottled water to be flushing their toilets, just because it's wasting their water.
Right.
They might need for drinking and brushing their teeth or whatever.
So that's, that's kind of where we're at. Um, I, I think, I think we may be on the right track with, um, I'm, I'm hopeful that with, with a little bit of, um, forwardness, I guess, from the board, from me, the new owners are going to say, yeah, we probably got to pay attention.
Good.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that's going on right now, and that's what I want to, that's what I want to push.
Right.
I want to push these new owners, look, it, there's X number of people that live down there, but they're in our town.
Right.
Take care of them.
Exactly.
So that's, you know, that's kind of where I'm at.
Okay.
Any questions?
I think you guys are. Not on that.
Get a health, you got a health question, or is that on move or zoning?
Well, well, actually, it could be a health question. Um, I noticed that there was an ad for a trailer across from Dollar General and for rent. I didn't know if the health officer cleared that particular piece of property or dwelling, or maybe does the state have to do it, um, after the fire?
I don't think it's for the one that had the fire.
It wasn't that one.
Okay.
It was a different one.
Okay, I, I'm.
I saw it as well.
I got.
I'm asking a question.
The zoning administrator's got his eyes on what's going on there.
Well, because of the fire, I, that's why I wasn't sure which direction I should ask that question.
I don't think it's for the one that had the fire.
Okay.
I think it's for the one that's in front of the one that had the fire.
Okay.
But the zoning administrator is.
The other one, remove first.
Which is bringing me into zoning.
Okay.
Because, uh, that's all right, Jamie. No, it's a good question. Um, it's bringing me into the zoning situation, because I know there's been a lot of, um, scuttlebutt about what's going on in the area of Dollar General. Um, Hannah and I, we have, um, we sent out a notice of violation on, um, May second, is that, is that right? Okay, we sent a notice violation dated May second, thirty days. So, um, now we're in the process, in, in that timeframe, Hannah's done, um, some research on the permits from the past that are permitted for those pieces of property, and this is for information to the, to the residents as well as the select board, okay? Um, we're still in that, trying to figure out and make sure we have all of our permits.
Yeah.
Um, make sure we know what's permitted and what hasn't been permitted, okay, through, through the years.
What's been requested and what was.
That's right. So, so there will be a, um, fine against, uh, some certain addresses of the, of this places that we have sent out the letters, because they are, are still not in compliance as of June second. We just want to do our research. Her and I are working on it, her more than me this week. I thought I was going to have time to do it this week, but, um, had a small situation happen, personal, so, um, didn't get the time that I thought I was going to have this week to, um, work on it.
We didn't have a bar this training to say much.
Okay.
Yes.
Good, we'll go back to that payroll.
Yeah. Finish with your.
Um, so I think next week, I'm hoping to be able to work with Hannah, um, and go over the permits that have been issued for the certain addresses that we've already sent out the violation notices, and then we'll be able to levy some fines on. And then we'll be able to levy some fines on, on those addresses, because they have not done what they were, they, they haven't, they haven't taken care of the violations.
And that's going through the judicial system, right?
That's right. It's going through the judicial system. Um, you know, but, I don't want, we don't wanna jump guns.
Right.
We, we, we wanna make sure that we have everything, uh, you know, all of our,
Ducks in row.
Ducks in row, all of our i's dotted and our t's crossed. So it has taken time. Unfortunately, it's not. And I think this is the right process. I really believe the right process is to research it out, know what we're doing, so that when we levy a fine, there's no, there's, it's, yes, you are in violation, yes, you're gonna pay the fine.
No more deaths.
That's, that's right. We have everything documented and, and the whole nine yards. So unfortunately, it is taking a little longer than what we'd really like, all of us, because I'd like to go in and find them tomorrow. All of them, about what's going on. And there's other ones that are coming. We're just working on them one at a time.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Do you have anything to add on that, Hannah? Because you've been working on it with me pretty hard, so. I think I covered everything, right? Stuff we've been talking about?
I was just thinking while you're talking, um, since all of our permits were in different spots, I'm gonna check with Julie and see what she has on.
Okay.
Or two, because I know that she has.
Okay, that's a good idea. Yeah. I just want the residents to know that we're not, you know, it, it seems like we're dragging our feet, but we're really not. We're just trying to be diligent about what we're doing, so that it holds up in court when, when the time comes. You know, we're just trying to be really diligent about this and make sure that everything is, is, is the way it's supposed to be. So Bob, we, we added, um, and I'm gonna try to add it in every, every meeting, a health officer report and a zoning report, just so that the residents a- and the board knows what's going on with those two aspects of the town. And I was just giving a brief synopsis of the, I already did the health, um, and the water situation down to Powell Estates. And, um, I was just giving a zoning, um, report on, um, some of the stuff that Hannah and I've been working on as far as sending out letters of notification, you know, with, with thirty days to fix your violation and then, and then, you know, go from there.
Okay, I, and, uh, everybody, my apologies for being late. I had a family emergency. I just couldn't get to the computer.
I know all about family emergencies this week, Bob. I'm good. I, I totally understand. Um, we do need, we do need, now that you're here, Bob, we do need to, um, approve a payroll of June second, because I'm in that payroll, and there was only two, um, voting members. Uh, the payroll amount was ten thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-two cents for June second.
So moved.
Second it.
Uh, any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Perfect. Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, all abstain.
Thank you.
Well, whatever. I don't have to vote. But I'll abstain.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody have any questions on the zoning or the health from the board?
No, thank you for the update.
Um, good, moving on to the video recording policy, because I, I wanna get you guys out here.
So Hannah updated it to include the Facebook Live, um, and so basically, we just needed you to approve or not.
I read it. I think you guys did an awesome job. It was all Hannah did that. Hannah, thank you. A great job.
Thank you.
I approve. Well, I make a motion to approve it. Sign it.
Second it.
Any more questions, comments, concerns on the, um, video recording policy? Good, all those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Mike, aye.
Nice job, Hannah.
Yep, excellent, thank you. Um, okay, let's go to public comment, Hannah.
I got your hand up.
Not yet.
Give him a couple minutes.
Only CNN either has their hand up yet.
Um, I just wanted to remind people that next Tuesday, the thirteenth, from ten AM to seven PM is the, uh, vote at the Powell Center Firehouse uh, for the head start at the Powell Elementary issue. Just wanna put that out there.
And that vote is just extending an already existing lease, so everyone knows.
And for those people don't know, there are, um, there are a new building proposal for, um, taking the old building down, putting a new building up. No other public comment?
No.
Okay, uh, I'll entertain a motion to enter into execu- executive contractual with the Sheriff's Department.
So moved.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Mike, aye.
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Mike, aye. Uh, there'll be no action taken at this time. We are going to revisit, um, this contract on our next meeting, which is June twenty-second. I'll entertain a motion to exa- uh, enter into executive contractual for the land purchase.
So moved.
The Boyce property.
Second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Mike, aye.
So moved.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Mike, aye.
Make a motion to sign the assignment is good for, um, do you wanna read it? Do you want me to read it?
I'll read it, whatever you want me to. See, assignment of ownership.
Ownership of the.
Um, for good and valuable consideration hereby assigns to the town of Powell all of its rights, title, and interest. Purchase and sale agreement dated November fourth is amended, uh, by addendum January twenty-sixth. Attached as exhibits A and B between the town and Powell buyer Gordon Boyce and Deborah Boyce as the sellers for premises situated at, in the town of Powell. Same premises conveyed to the sellers by deed of Robert Barlow and Barbara Barlow dated July fifteenth, two thousand nine, and recorded with the Powell Land Records and Book one fifty-three, page one fifty-four, and containing approximately three hundred and one acres, parcel ID zero two four dash one nine, span number four nine five dash one five six dash one zero zero nine nine.
So moved to sign the agreement.
Second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Mike, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sign that after, it's fine.
I get tongue tied when I.
Yeah, it's all right. Uh, any public comment, Hannah?
Oh, wait, Jennifer, that's up there. You go ahead, Jim.
Hi there, Jim Closeless. Hey, um, I guess I'm just surprised, because all of this, um, kinda just got added to the agenda tonight, so. Is, is, does this mean that we, the town, is buying a piece of property? And if so, is there a purchase price that is available now?
This is the same piece of property we've been talking about, Jim, uh, the, the, um, the town, the town is technically not buying the property. It's coming through a grant through the, uh, Vermont Housing Commission Board. Um.
No, no, that's all I wanted to hear. I mean, unfortunately, tonight was the first time you kinda said, uh, a public session for the purchase of land. Everything has always been before, just contractual, but you just made total sense right there, and I thank you very much.
Well, that's, you know, I'll be honest with you, Jim, your emails earlier this afternoon, back and forth, um, made some sense about when we can, um,
Explain.
Explain or come out for what, what the executive is for. I think you're absolutely correct. It's like, the first one that we had was for the Sheriff's Department contract. You know, we can't obviously discuss the contract and that stuff in open session, but I think you're absolutely correct that we probably can bring out what, what the contractual or, you know, those type of things. I think if we go into a personnel issue, um, then I don't think we can, ninety-five percent of the time, probably, we, we, we can't get into what the personnel, you know, who the person is.
I, I, I totally disagree. And tonight, just knowing contractual for the sheriff's, everyone knows that it now is for the agreement for next year and contractual for this property, um, now every, or, or some, the purchase now knows what you're doing. So I think it's great. I, I really appreciate it. We're moving forward.
We're trying.
Yep, no, I, I give you guys a lot of credit. You guys are doing great, so.
Any other public comment, Hannah? Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
I want to take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Mike, aye. Thank you, everyone, for attending.